Then call tonight's meeting to order. If you would, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge.
Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Mayor Kind.
Siri.
Alderwoman Dobbs.
Here.
Alderman Feige.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Huey.
Here.
Alderman Eidman.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Steiger.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll look for approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Please, yes.
Okay. Uh, I don't believe we have any presentations or personal appearances, so we will move along to the city administrators' report.
So you've got an updated report at your seat, um, going over a couple of items. Uh, if you have any questions on anything else, that's fine. Uh, the final piece for the conveyance of the property on the east side of the levee to the middle Mississippi River National Wildlife Refuge was recorded and that is complete. We started that back in 2020 and it's now done. Uh, so we have a copy of that in our files and I passed that along to the Levy Commission. They met on Tuesday. Um, item seven, that's the update. Alliance has been busy this week. We've had some problem areas crop up. Had a sewer break down on Jefferson. It's a very shallow, uh, sewer that's clay tile. Uh, that's been fixed. Uh, Bowman's will be coming back to repair that, uh, when they get back in town, uh, to start up on their, uh, repaving, which should be next week when they'll start milling. Uh, we had a problem out with the concrete at the nutrition center. Uh, there's a storm inlet that had a broken piece that, um, we, we found when they dug the street out to replace the concrete. So now we're trying to get the box, uh, poured back for the concrete pipes and get that stormwater fixed. Uh, we are not blocking any, any area that the contractor can work at least to set that street up to start pouring concrete at that point. Uh, and we have a problem up on Fourth Street.
Can we go back to that one? That seemed like a pretty big issue. I saw some pictures. I didn't get a chance to go out there, but that...
I mean, it was a, it was a sixteen inch, sixteen inch pipe? Something like that.
Bigger.
Do I?
Maybe bigger.
Anyway.
Two footer, two, two footer.
I didn't think it was that big, but I, but I know what you're saying, but it tilted and it's, it's also, it's concrete tile or concrete, uh, pipe. It tilted down and there was a gap at the top and it busted off some. So we have replaced that back on there and we're going to seal that up and then pour the new box. And then that should solve that concrete. So apparently all the water from the stormwater and it took the dirt and the rock that was underneath it and it washed it down into the, uh, the area overall, uh, behind, uh, Claymont and Brentwood into that, to, to the, uh, single area. But there's no effect to this, to the sanitary system. We didn't see any issue with that.
Are we sure about that?
Yes.
I, I mean, how do we test that in such a short amount of time in two days? Uh, hour and we tested that there's no infiltration into, into sewer.
So we put dye tablets in and see if the dye came out, uh, in the stormwater and we did not see it in the storm.
The stormwater's above the sewer line there.
Right. So once that's, I mean, once we get it fixed, then we'll test it again to see if there's, you know?
Well, so we don't know there's infiltration.
I, I know. We don't see a break in the, in the, uh, in the sanitary system. We don't see any daylight. We don't see any rock coming in.
I thought they smelled sewer.
There's a manhole right there.
Okay.
So we're going to look at that. That has been sealed, apparently, uh, a strong seal so that there isn't infiltration from the sides coming in. Uh, but we're going to also fix that while we're sitting there. Cause, uh, where the concrete comes out to the stormwater sewer is also a manhole. So we're going to go on the backside of that, cut that out and then redo all of that.
It's a pretty big issue.
Right.
Have you sat chances in?
I, yeah, I went out and looked at it and stuff like that, but that doesn't affect that big tank on the back of the shopping center area?
It may go. I don't think it goes to that because the tank is going to be part of the, that development, not the stormwater on the street.
Well, I know, but where that water goes out of that tank? It's gotta go somewhere down through there. I, yeah, I...
I mean, I don't know exactly where it, where it all connects and then daylights out.
Right, yeah, I don't either, but I would, I would be opening that tank and looking down in there to see where that goes and stuff, cause I would bet you after all these years, that tank could filter in, you know, which slows the water to be able to get out of there or even backs it up in some places and stuff. But that's, I would think that would be part of that overall assessment of that area of what's causing problems.
Right, so we're dye testing. We'll be going back to smoke testing.
Right.
Next week, however, we got interrupted with all these other, other small problems that we had popped.
Right.
Uh, and we've also asked the, uh, the, uh, the owner of the shopping center to have somebody look at that. So I haven't heard back from him yet on that, but he's supposed to have somebody look at it.
Can, can, can we ask to be present when they inspect that?
I, I can ask him to try to remind his contractor to do that.
Yeah. I'd be, think that move us to find out, you know, make sure we get good information about what's happening.
I would, I would trust the contractor, but yeah.
And Bob and I went out there today and talked to the people out there working on the street. We looked at everything and it would have been nice if I would have known this before we went out there. Uh, I didn't know anything about the problem there. I would have looked at it and...
So it cropped up yesterday. We've been working on it since then. I, I don't know if I need to have a running commentary for everybody. We can do that, but that's just, you know, more information to send out.
Yeah.
You know, we've talked about this before, keeping Alderman informed of what's going on in the wards. And if it's in my ward, I'd like to know about it.
And so I'm not worried.
It takes a couple of minutes to call him.
Was that just found yesterday?
Yes, it was just found.
That was just found yesterday, so that'd be hard to...
We're still assessing what was going on. So, um, any questions about anything else?
Well, I mean, we're, we're not, I mean, we're, we've kind of come up with a solution for the repair, right? I mean, we're kind of past assessment. We're, we're, uh, troubleshooting the repair at this point.
Right, right. We're getting ready to, you know, initiate all the repairs to that and then get back into testing that system to make sure there's no infiltration.
Any other questions, comments regarding the city administrators' report?
I kind of cut you off there before you finished that last, that last part. You were going on to another, uh, part, I think of your, uh, was, oh, was, sorry.
Was it Fourth Street?
I cut you off, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think it was.
I think it's Fourth Street. Okay, so anyway, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, so Fourth Street, we found a, uh, an issue with surcharging in the, in the manholes. Uh, we've been located a sewer break that may have been caused when they did the Fourth Street improvements, when they did the stormwater that crosses the street, uh, or getting, when I left there and that was about an hour before those guys wrapped up, they had been cutting into the street to try to dig down to where they have a, a problem getting the jetter out because it's wedged in there, rock has fallen in and, and they can't get it out. So we're cutting that. We've called Joker's, uh, paving back in to take a look, uh, cause it may have been caused by the construction that they did in that neighborhood. Uh, we'll work with them on, on what to do for repairs. Uh, but at this point, we're looking at just opening it up and then tomorrow morning we'll try to get back in there and see what the issue is. Um, it's a, but it is a broken sewer line. Um, we are pumping that, getting that sewer out as, as it, as it comes through, uh, to keep anything from happening into the homes. And we haven't had a report of any backups in any of the houses.
So that's a main that got cut?
Yeah.
Not just a lateral? That was a main?
It was a main.
Right.
It, it, we don't know if it was, if it was cut, if it, it was something that got settled on it and broke it because it's clay or if it just separated because it's, you know, the bell housing on the clay. I'm not sure.
But once they get down, well, they're down to it now, aren't they?
They're down to a section of it.
Right.
But we need to cut further back to the south to, to where it is jammed, where we figured that all of the rock and, and debris has fallen in. And so that's just coming, no, we'll find that out tomorrow.
It's nothing that we could camera and see?
I mean, the camera stops where...
Right.
Everything, you know, where all the rock is, yeah.
So what's our recourse if that is damaged by the contractor and the previous work?
Uh, we will discuss with them and see if we're, see what kind of agreement we can come up with. We want to see what it is first before we put blame on anybody, so...
So that did have to do with that pipe we replaced across there for the stormwater?
Yeah, cause remember the old pipe was leaky, had problems, so we've, we had to move it up and put a new inlet in and it crossed over to the, to the newer inlet that was also drawn in. But right there is a sewer line that it, it goes across. We, we think, we're just not sure until we get in there. We think that's what caused the problem. So we called Joker's Paving and they were, they were going to be by tonight or tomorrow. Uh, and we'll, we'll get out with them.
Yeah, just sticks in my mind that extra that we paid them to, uh, redo that pipe and stuff, cause I still have questions about that. I mean, it's all past tense and stuff, but, but anyhow.
Any other questions or happy regarding the report? Okay, thank you, Abby. Uh, we will move along to some other staff reports tonight. First up tonight, we have tourism director, Aaron Smith.
Hello, everyone. In my report, I included a lot of stats. Uh, this time we, we finally have a lot of metrics that I think really show what's, uh, going on in tourism, uh, and I'll start trying to include those. I think we might, uh, end up losing place or AI though, uh, in this next budget year, but, uh, it's been pretty good to have, uh, thus far. Uh, what it's been showing is in our downtown, we're up eleven thousand visits, showing that the total visitors is down, but the number of visits, uh, repeat people coming back is up. Um, so that's led to a higher visitation, um, which is good. I think, um, you know, what that, that hopefully speaks to is our presence on social media, how we've been, uh, a lot more structured with that and becoming kind of a trusted source of information for people. Um, and then our ad frequency, so people, uh, hearing our ads either on the radio or seeing it on social media or seeing it in a print, um, in print form, uh, is really helping. And, uh, yeah, hopefully, and, and what we're seeing too, so I have, uh, on the second page, uh, kind of some information about, uh, our website statistics. We just completed our new website in June, um, so it hasn't even really kind of taken hold. Uh, but what you can see, especially at the bottom of those website stats, um, total unique users is up a hundred and twenty-two percent from last year. Um, you know, amount of people, uh, getting on is up a hundred thirteen percent. Um, so those ads are really working at driving people to the website and now it's just getting that website into, uh, the shape to, to convert. So hopefully next year we'll see the amount of visitors go up as well from that. Um, a group of us went to the Missouri Main Street Connection Conference, uh, which was in St. Charles, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Um, there's a ton of informational lectures, uh, we sat down and talked websites and, um, recruiting businesses to your downtown and a lot of useful information going around, uh, there, so that was, uh, pretty good and, uh...
Aaron, um...
Yeah.
Um, I was one of the lucky ones that got to go to that seminar and it, it blew my mind. Um, it's this Main Street Connection. We signed up for it to receive the grant and it's a downtown revitalization program. It's a national thing. National Endowment of the Arts pays in, the Parks Department. It's a big national, and then they have state chapters and Missouri has their state chapter and that's who hosted this event on the St. Charles. And I'm thankful that, um, Aaron invited me to go to it. Uh, one of the courses was about private investment in revitalization of, of your downtown. Um, they had a program where they, uh, had a, an empty vacant building, um, and they had like a, I won't call it contest, but it was, uh, and they had sixty-seven people apply to rent that building after they put together this, uh, program. And they had about twelve different advisors that were going to help that new business owner that moved in there. For once a month, they were going to have an insurance person, a banker, a CPA, a real estate, a social media content creator. So they had about twelve different advisors that were going to meet with that business owner for the first twelve months. And, um, so instead of them, um, putting in just anybody, the first person that came along and was going to sign a lease, they almost, they had a, a vetting process where they found a business that fit that downtown need. And, and it ended up being a bakery because the, the downtown didn't have a bakery. And this lady had no idea she was going to start a bakery before this process started. Um, she's now in her twelfth month. She's just finished her first year. And it, it, it didn't sound like anybody, um, was not jumping for joy in the process of them taking that vacant building and turning it into a very productive part of their downtown. So that's part of what Aaron has roped us into getting in here.
Right.
Um, it's, it really is a well-funded, well-organized, uh, twenty, thirty, forty years in the process. They've, they've done their homework and they're, they're very vetted and they do things right. Um, so we've got the town hall coming up here in September and I encourage everybody on this board and the mayor and, um, staff to attend that, uh, city hall meeting, cause that, what they'll do then is start finding out what our needs are, what our wants are. And, um, I can't thank you enough, Aaron, for getting us involved in that, cause that'll be a, a huge boost for our downtown area.
Yeah, absolutely. And just getting the plan together and I, I think, you know, we need to go out and recruit some businesses and kind of think, what, what does our downtown need, you know, not even just for business, but for our residents as well. So, yeah, it, um, it's nice to have some support in that, uh, in that realm from a, from a national organization. Um, the last little sort of graphic I'll point you to is, uh, we have some stats on, um, you know, we do a, a matching grant with the state, um, that helps us boost, um, advertising outside of a fifty mile radius. And so I have some, some stats. We do a, a Facebook, uh, ad campaign and a Google, um, display, um, ad. And what you were saying, I know we were, I mean, uh, Teddy had talked about this, but, you know, we, we try to, uh, hit these overnight markets that are, uh, kind of just outside of range or that have a, a direct flight to St. Louis that can get here quickly. And so we're seeing a lot of movement, uh, of course, from Chicago. Uh, and then Dallas-Fort Worth surprisingly, uh, has been a big area that's interested in coming out and seeing us, so. Um, and then you can see some other demographics in there. Any questions?
I know I've always been a little bit of a tough sell on tourism and stuff, but Aaron, it's nice to see that it's more than just putting somebody in a position and giving them a job with little help or little direction, but I, I do appreciate, uh, you know, seeing these type of things like this, but I also, uh, involvement, uh, definitely helps, but uh, it'll make it easier to support tourism in the future.
We need metrics and that's what we didn't have, you know, and I think also now, now we have kind of a clear direction, you know, I think fixing the website was a huge thing. We, we haven't even seen the windfall from that. I mean, I'm hoping in the, the next year or two, we're going to really start to see that placing an advertisement, it sends people to the website, those people have an easier job. And I'm, I'm still going through the website and going, okay, this needs to be fixed, this needs to be fixed, to make it easier for people to then book a stay or find out what's here, you know? It's, it's amazing how our website just wasn't set up for that at all. Um, but yeah, you can see in the numbers, we're getting a lot more engagement. The ads are driving people to the website. The website should convert people to getting here, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
Uh, next up tonight, we have community development with David Bova.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, you've got my report there. I wanted to point out a few things. The, uh, 2024 historic preservation grant application, it's been, uh, floating around for quite a bit, but we did get approval from SHPO and an agreement signed, uh, this past week, so the RFP, that's for a walking tour, uh, mobile app walking tour. That RFP will probably, will go out in September. Um, I need the comprehensive plan there. Uh, you can see we were reworking the plan with CMO RPC. We received that back today. I haven't had a chance to open it, but, uh, so what I wanted to let you all know was that we'll get the comp plan committee back together in September to go over that. Uh, under planning and zoning, planning and zoning meant, uh, on September, I'm sorry, July seventeenth, uh, and reviewed the, uh, special use permit there, uh, reviewed the annexation and then recommended approval, uh, which will come up tonight in, uh, public hearing, uh, of the rezoning of the forty-nine point oh four acres of five hundred, six hundred block of progress Parkway to PUD R2. That's really all I have, unless you have questions in my report.
Any questions, comments? Nope. All right. Thank you, David. And I don't believe Chief Steiger is here and he was not going to be able to make it, but his report is included in your packet if you want to take a look through that. At your leisure. And then this time we will open up the floor to public comment. Anybody like to comment?
Uh, my name is Scott Williams, representative of First State Community Bank, and, uh, just kind of was hoping to get some answers regarding Parkwood Drive, uh, off of sixty-one, which is located right next to the bank. Um, I, I guess two questions, you know, it seems like it's, it's been almost a little over two months that that project's been going on. Um, and it obviously affects our, our ingress egress to our bank. Um, we, we have customers daily really frustrated and complaining. You know, of course, we don't know what to tell them. We don't have answers. Uh, but then it also, it has to be affecting the, the Plaza Shopping Center as well, um, affecting traffic in and out of that as well. So, um, I, I guess the question I have tonight is, um, is there a timeframe estimate as to when that road is going to get back open and provide thoroughfare to the shopping center and provide ingress egress to, to the bank? Um, a concern I have is we have customers that are now using the, uh, drive-through entrance, uh, in, in the wrong way, going through backwards through our drive-through and the ATM. We have not endorsed that and said, okay, yes, that's the right way in. The contractor has provided a, a, a entry point and exit point. It's one entrance and exit. Uh, so that is being done, but, um, customers are finding other ways in and, and I'm kind of concerned for safety issues and potentially wrecks and whatever. The other question I want to bring up is, it seems like the project, obviously it's a big project and it's a big undertaking, but, uh, there's been fresh concrete poured, fresh concrete cut out, salted out, removed. And, and there's different points along Parkwood that continue to be worked on. I'm just curious why, why that couldn't be finished from sixty-one at least a point base, which would be beneficial not only to the bank, I'm biased, obviously, but it would provide a nice ingress egress to the shopping center, which would promote commerce, which promotes sales tax dollars, which I think would be beneficial to the city. So anyway, timeframe and when will that road be back open? Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any other public comment at this time?
Excuse me, is this for like new business or? I have a question about the McBride.
My name is, uh, Rick Schwent. I'm here with, on behalf of First Baptist Church. And, uh, obviously the McBride project is taking in off of Bowser Drive and Parkwood also. Uh, when we purchased that piece of property back in ninety-eight, I think it was, that was a farm, mid, uh, Bowser Drive was not there. Uh, our church paid to have that road put in, Bowser Drive, from all the way from where it turns from asphalt, all the way down past our church and same thing at the end of Parkwood Drive. Back in two thousand and two, our trustees, uh, said that it was, uh, for, turned over to the public forever. It's the way it's worded in the documents from city, from down at the courthouse. Um, our question, I guess, is, is with the subdivisions going in, it wasn't turned over to the city, so is the street still belong to the church? And we're going to have to maintain it with all the traffic coming from... For the, for all the construction, all the new traffic's coming in for the subdivision. I don't expect answers tonight, but I want somebody to be aware of it or somebody can find me answers or find us answers to what's going on. Because I can look at the deeds and deeds for the property all around that do not encompass Bowser Drive. Bowser Drive is a separate on all the plot maps and same thing with Parkwood Drive. We put in a section probably a hundred foot long, sixty foot wide at Parkwood, the part that enters right before you come into the new subdivision. So, uh, you need to be aware and I guess we need answers before it does happen, cause, cause as far as I know, in twenty-five years that I've been there, there's been no maintenance done to that road. There's, it's been, it was concrete and well put in when it was put in and it's needed no maintenance. So, but with concrete trucks and all the construction equipment going on on the top of it, that's not going to hold up forever, so we just, I guess, like clarification.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll get back with you on an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Do we want to go back to, uh, Scott's comments? Can, when we give him, uh, we might be able to get back to Scott on some answers for Parkwood?
Yeah. We should know more tonight. Get back to, we'll get with you tomorrow.
Scott, did you hear that?
Yes.
Any other public comment at this time?
Hi, I'm Bob Yor and I was on the committee that started to work for the Levy Refuge probably over ten years ago. And I was heartened to hear that that deed has finally been signed. I thank you all for your support over these last ten years. The former administrator said I wouldn't live long enough to see this happen. Thank you all.
Any other public comment? All right. If no other public comment, at this time, we will move along to tonight's consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Believe I have a motion and a second. Has to be a little more time to look that over. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Take us on. We have a couple of public hearings tonight. Uh, first, uh, we have a public hearing, the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri will hold a public hearing to consider the rezoning of the following property from an R1 single-family district to a PUD R2 planned urban development. Uh, this is, uh, relating to the forty-nine acres in the five hundred to six hundred block of progress Parkway. We will open this public hearing at six twenty-seven.
Uh, McBride Land Growth LLC requested to rezone forty-nine point oh four acres of property along the five hundred to six hundred block of progress Parkway from R1 single-family residential to PUD R2 planned urban development general residential. The designation PUD R2 allows uses corresponding with R1, R2, C1 and C2 districts. However, the applicant has indicated on their application that their requested use is single-family residential subdivision and has provided a sketch plan showing the intended development of such subdivision. Uh, the plan is here, uh, in front of you at the table. A planned unit development is allowed to be established within the requirements of the zoning ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve. The area to establish a PUD must be a minimum of five acres and is intended to permit developments that will provide a desirable and stable environment in harmony with that of the surrounding areas. The proposed new housing development supports several strategic goals identified in the twenty-twenty-four City of St. Genevieve Comprehensive Plan and the major street plan and is in harmony with the surrounding areas. Rezoning requires a public hearing of which notice was placed in the St. Genevieve Herald, July thirtieth edition, and the Planning and Zoning Commission meant on July seventeenth and voted six oh two to recommend approval of the rezoning.
David, can you cover what we looked at on Bowser Drive? What we looked at, uh, when looking for the, uh, final plats on the streets?
Yes, so Wednesday, I guess, I received a call asking about, uh, Bowser Drive and Parkwood Drive, uh, and verified via the recorded plats of, I think it's called Windcrest Village Second and Parkwood Subdivision, which are both pieces of property that First Baptist Church sold and replatted, that both of those streets, uh, the portion of Bowser Drive, uh, that Mr. Schwent mentioned and the portion of Parkwood Drive were indeed, uh, platted as giving over to the public in this term, the city.
So, I guess explain the city. I mean, that city maintained it then?
Correct.
For all these times, uh, loud, snow, whatever?
Correct.
Required, so, so when you turn over a piece of property, uh, like that, that's just like any other city street in town?
Correct. I mean, I, I don't think, uh, Mr. Schwent mentioned, there hasn't been a... I mean, I don't think, Mr. Schwent mentioned, there hasn't been improvements, but yes, we have plowed it, cleaned it, things of that nature. It is a city street.
Right.
Do we give out any kind of a notice and inform the people that hasn't been changed over to like county to city or?
I mean, when the plat was recorded, I assume they would have known at that time. I think what Mr. Schwent is asking is, you know, is that definite? They don't want to have to take care of it.
We didn't see anything with ownership. You know, they said we turned it over to the city. It said we dedicated it to the public forever. It's the way the wording is on both plats. So I didn't know what that meant, and neither did they know now, now.
So that being written on the plat gives those streets to the city.
So they don't have any liability or anything there? It's city street and it's ours?
Yes, sir. Any other questions for me on the public hearing? I believe so. Any other questions for David?
And we do have some representatives from McBride with us. If you guys would like to come on.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor and Board and all staff members. Mark, it's great to see you. Thank you all for your time tonight. My name's Katie Peruca. I am with McBride Homes with me tonight. I think you all know Jeremy by now, Jeremy Roth, the president of our land development group. And then Angie Carter is on the legal team with me at McBride. So we're so happy to be here tonight. As you all know, this is, I mean, been a couple of years in the making, so it's kind of a milestone to be at the zoning point. I have a little presentation I was going to run through, and then we can answer any questions that you might have. As I mentioned, you know, this goes back a couple of years. So for those who are not as familiar with the origins of kind of, you know, this project and where McBride came in, I think it was at P&amp;Z, we determined it was two years to the day that we had our first meeting. The city and the Industrial Development Corp. reached out to Jeremy and some folks at McBride and just had a lot of conversations about the need and demand for new housing in St. Genevieve, specifically just a variety of different types of housing and price points. And so lots of conversations held. And then when the city put out the RFQ for this project, we submitted and were very happy to be selected. As you know, we then negotiated and signed the development agreement and have dug into our due diligence ever since, bringing us here to our zoning request. A little bit about McBride. You can go one more, Happy. A little bit about McBride. We are the largest home builder in Missouri. We're not just a St. Louis home builder. We develop in many different counties and cities outside of St. Louis. So St. Charles, Jefferson County, Franklin County, Crawford County. We are developing in Ralla and soon to be St. Genevieve, hopefully. So, you know, we believe that really speaks to our strength. And another, just kind of tooting our own horn, we're excited to just brag a little. We're getting ready to celebrate a big milestone. So 80 years in business coming up here in April. Very excited and proud of that. The next slide is just an aerial of the site, which I think we're all familiar with by now. But again, Progress Parkway on the south, and then First Baptist Church up to the north, point base up there as well. And this slide just kind of highlights some of the features of our project. We just wanted to point out. So we are looking to develop 173 single-family detached lots. There will be three distinct residential villages. I'll touch on that a little bit more. But three different kind of series of products that we will be offering. New public streets, utilities, and sidewalks. And there's about 13 acres or so of common ground. So about 33% of the site is common ground. That will be maintained by a homeowners association, which we will form and get up, you know, up and running so that that common ground is well taken care of. And then some neat amenities. We will be putting in a playground and a new pedestrian trail. So the site is currently zoned R1. And as mentioned, we're seeking a PUD R2 Planned Urban Development. And that PUD is just a great tool. It allows flexibility in site design, clustering of lots, which then opens up more green space and common ground, allows us to preserve natural features and less land disturbance. The next slide, these are stolen out of your master plan. But it's just, it's really nice how closely the proposed PUD and project aligns with the goals in your master plan. So to encourage a variety of new home construction types with a lot of different price points, to consider revised or additional residential zoning districts to allow for denser and more affordable single-family residential units, and then to encourage development of additional residential subdivisions to provide quality housing opportunities to the residents of the city across all income and lifestyle groups. And when we get into the homes, I'll be able to kind of highlight how our different villages really sort of accommodate these goals. So about the houses, as mentioned, these are single-family detached. We are offering those three distinct villages or home series. So Arbor Series or Village, that's kind of like our smaller one-car garage. There's going to be two-story options and ranch options in that village or series. And then Bayside is, you know, maybe an expanding family, moving up in size a little bit and price point. These are two-car garages. There actually are some lots that will accommodate a three-car garage for that Bayside. Again, ranches and two-stories in that village. And then Oakwood is kind of like our higher-end kind of a buy-up product. Those are, again, a little bit larger. And those will be two-car. And again, some lots will be able to accommodate a three-car Oakwood. And in the Oakwood line, we have the ranch, the two-story. And then that line also has a story and a half plan, which is beautiful with that owner's suite on the first floor. As mentioned, there are lots available for three-car garages. And again, multiple different villages. Within each village, multiple different floor plan options. And then above and beyond that, there are multiple options for the elevation of the home. So lots of variety, which it results in a really, a really beautiful streetscape, where not every house looks exactly the same, but you've got a lot of different variety, adding character and value to the community. And I skipped over fully sited yards and landscape packages are standard with all of our homes. So here is the plan. And this is kind of color-coded by those villages I just talked about. So yellow is our Arbor Series. Those are the smaller one-car garage homes. The blue is our Bayside, kind of that middle tier. The light blue is, those are the two-car Bayside. And then that darker blue, those are the lots that would accommodate a three-car Bayside. And then the orange and the red, those, that's where the Oakwood series will be. Again, the orange is two-car, and then that brick red is, those are for the three-car Oakwood. Great. And then we included just some sample images of our homes. So you can see the Arbor Series, two-stories and ranches, a lot of variety and different style elevations. And then this shows our Bayside series, that kind of middle tier, two-stories and ranches. And then those are that Oakwood kind of buy-up product line. And the next couple of slides are just some images of the interior of some of our homes, just wanting to show off our finishes and fixtures that we offer. Just beautiful, smart, open floor plans, great for entertaining, big kitchens. And just some more pictures, bathrooms and bedrooms. And then this slide, we just wanted to highlight our design studio, which is in Chesterfield. It is 10,000 square feet. It's huge. It is award-winning. And we really are excited about this concept. So all of our customers will come out to our design studio in Chesterfield two or three times, and there they will make all the selections for their homes. So they'll choose their flooring and their, you know, plumbing fixtures and their cabinets. They have a lot of fun doing it. And more importantly, it allows them to control kind of the budget and also, you know, where do they want to invest in their home? Do they want to invest in a big kitchen where they can entertain a lot? Or maybe they want a luxury master bathroom? So they can kind of, you know, control that process and decide how they want to invest in their homes. It's a lot of fun for them to, when I walk through there, I want to just tear my house down and start completely over. It's just beautiful, so. And then this is just kind of a summary slide. So again, new single-family homes in St. Jen, three distinct villages and home product lines. Smart, we believe the plan to be a smart layout with common ground, pedestrian trail and playground. Just noting that staff recommended approval and Planning Commission gave us a positive recommendation. So we would love your approval tonight, and we are happy to answer any questions. I know there were a few as we were walking in tonight, so pepper away.
What's the cost per square foot? What's the difference between Arbor, Bayside, and Oakwood?
That's a great question. And I don't know that I have that at my fingertips. Do you, I mean, I know that we, in broad terms, have discussed like starting price point by series.
We thought price point. I just know cost per square foot for the.
That cost per square foot can vary greatly based on the options that a buyer chooses to put in the home. Each buyer has the choice. We believe in the power of choice, and a buyer can build a really nice base home with all the included features. They can decide to put $5,000 in upgrades within the home. We had a buyer this week at a new community in South County that decided to put $170,000 in options. So it can vary greatly depending on the buyer, and the buyer can really choose where they want to invest their dollars.
But there is the basic cost for the foundation and lumber and a roof and everything with a naked house, do you know what that price is?
It'll depend on each model, each floor plan. I mean, we want to start, and it'll vary by square foot too. I see. Yeah.
So like the Arbor Series, do you know what the base model in the Arbor Series, roughly what that square footage dollar amount is?
It depends, again, on ranch, two-story. I mean, it can vary.
Well, it can vary. I mean, do you have a range?
Where's it start at?
Where's it start at? And what can it go to?
Let's talk about, I think the ranges of the sales prices. I mean, I think we've always said that we want to be able to offer something that starts in the ones.
Yes.
And that would be the Arbor Series, probably a ranch. You know, the Arbor Series might end up averaging in the mid to high twos. But the prices will go, the sales prices.
End up in the mid to high twos. So we're starting below two. But if I want kitchen appliances, or I want toilets at work and everything, it goes up.
No. You could have a, all the.
I want to walk in and have just a generic Sears house.
Yeah. You could get very nice included features for those base prices. But you could decide to add upgrades on your flooring, cabinets, countertops, carpet, paint. I mean, the sky's the limit. So I think the prices will range from the ones up, you know, into the fours and potentially the flats.
You can talk around this, but the thing is, you know what the basic price of that house is. Basic price. And then you're going to add on what they want. What is the basic price? What do you start with? And then start adding all the accessories.
We have a variety of floor plans and elevations in it.
Just make one floor plan.
I.
Have that answer.
I don't have an exact price here today. I mean, it's going to be, there's a lot of variables that go into that with infrastructure, the final design of the site.
What's the square footage of an Arbor house?
The Arbor Series ranges from, I think, a thousand.
Thousand twenty.
Yeah.
A thousand square foot?
So the Arbor size ranges from 1,020 square feet up to 1,378 square feet.
So 1,000 square feet?
Yes.
And that's two bedrooms?
Two bedrooms, yeah.
Small bedroom?
Yeah.
A thousand square feet for a two-bedroom was, that's not bad. I mean, that's not.
It's not good, not bad.
You like each other.
While we're talking about pricing and stuff, kind of go through the process of, you know, kind of looking at it from the homeowner's standpoint of how he gets to his number and his budget and stuff of what they want to spend to buy a house there. You know, you first select a lot that they particularly like a lot. From there, how does the whole pricing structure work then? Are they given a base model price? You know, they say they want the Arbor or Bayside or whatever. They're given a basic price then for a 1,400 square foot home or whatever that model is and stuff. So do they have to put money down, buy the lot then? How do you get, how do they get to their final number then in the selection process so that they know if I buy this lot, I pick this house? And then, you know, is there like a timeframe in there that takes place? You know, do you have to buy the lot first before you can even get to that point of knowing the end cost? I guess, how does that?
So first of all, we will, we'll have an onsite sales manager within the community, seven days a week. So we might start it on a sales trailer as soon as we can. We'll start building some display homes for each village. Once those are complete, the sales manager would move from the sales trailer to the display homes and have an office within those display homes. So somebody walks into the sales trailer or the sales office within the display home and says, I'm interested in the community. I want to buy a house. So you're exactly right. They'll start talking about, you know, what their budget might be, what their lifestyle might be. They would select, you know, which village they want to be in. They're going to narrow it down to a lot and a floor plan and an elevation. The floor plan might have some structural options, and they'll make those decisions there within the sales office. And they'll get a price. If they like it, they'll write a contract, they'll sign the contract, and then they're under contract to build, let's say, an Aspen on Lot 14.
Right.
With Craftsman elevation. So then after that, once they're under contract, they would immediately set an appointment at the design studio. So then they would go to the design studio, spend several hours with one of our design consultants, and pick out all the rest of their options. Flooring, cabinets, countertops, backsplash, lighting, low bowl. I mean, you name it, they're picking out all their options. And they'll price that out with a design consultant and come up with that final price.
Yeah, I was just trying to get to the point of how they can know what their final number is. Do they have to pay money at a point? In other words, do they have to buy the lot, commit to that contract and stuff before they can actually get to what the house will?
No, we do do a deposit when someone signs a contract. So they would put up some earnest deposit once they're under. So they would put up some earnest deposit once they're under contract. And the sales manager onsite can give them a, an idea and help them budget for what type of options they might select in the design studio.
Typically in the display homes are the nicer, the ones I've been in usually have a lot of options and stuff to really give a lot of curb appeal. And that's nice, but I'm just wondering how the people can get to their budget number. You know, how much in the commitment process they have to go to, you know, to finally find out. You know, because we all see, you know, one thing and like the better and stuff like that. But there is a process.
Sales managers can help them and assist them. Okay, what would you like the budget to go spend at the design studio? Here's some of the things that you could select at the design studio.
So in the different, the different models you put out there, you don't really put a base model out there with the base everything as compared to the next one next to it might be an upgraded.
Yeah, the display homes will try to present as many options as we can. And there's, we have some great. I forget what they're called, but on our website, you can go into a model and it's, it's three dimensional and you can click through rooms and see some of the various options and the floor plans. So a, a, and sales manager will have pictures they can pull up within our sales system to show the buyers. So.
A couple of other questions and stuff here now.
Let me interject real quick. I just, real quick on this topic. We're here for a zoning request. So, you know, we veered into price points and things of that nature. And I know they'll have all that data for us, but we did not tell them to prepare for that tonight. So I do want to focus on what you're seeing and what is in the proposal. Okay. And then there's going to be a lot of time to discuss this. They're all good questions. I agree. But I just, they came here prepared for a zoning request. So I, I kind of want to honor that. So just make sure we're staying on that line. That, that's all I'm going to say.
I do have questions on that line.
Well, hold on, Alderman Donovan was still.
Oh, is that on this?
Yeah.
Okay. And the overall layout of the subdivision from the basic one, last one that you presented has drastically changed. I mean, not a simple subtle change, drastically change. And one of the concerns I had, and I realize the other one was just a preliminary, so. But was the loss of the two dead end cul-de-sacs, thinking about custom homes and what our market might like and stuff. Of course, I'm not a marketing expert. You people are. Just wondering why that change was made.
Sure. So I can explain that a little bit. So that, that previous layout was one that the city had done several years ago with a city consultant. And we just kind of took that and ran with it. And I know we talked and kind of massaged the villages and the product within that layout. But we just, we kept that street pattern on that. It was done by Smith and Company and we kept that. Once we turned this over to our civil engineer, Sterling Engineering, and they started looking at it. Now, right away they said, hey, your entrance on progress Parkway really should shift west. And they're looking at, you know, affordability is key within this project. We, we want to offer, you know, be able to offer a very affordable price for these homes. So they looked at it with, through the lens of, hey, how can we save on infrastructure costs? So number one, they said, you got to move your entrance to the west side of, of that culvert on progress Parkway. And, and that was a no brainer for us. If we didn't do that, we'd be building, extending that culvert. Be very expensive. So we did that right away. So that, that kind of naturally changed the street pattern because if you remember when the entrance was a little further east, it, it went kind of straight up into that cul-de-sac. And then there was another cul-de-sac coming down on the, on the west side. So it, it kind of forced that Boslar extension to that entrance. So that, that was one thing. Then, then the engineer said, hey, we, we can be a lot more efficient with infrastructure. If we trade these two dead end cul-de-sacs for these two bubbles. We said, let's see what it looks like. We did get more lots. So again, this layout is more efficient when it comes to infrastructure costs. It will help keep those price points down for these homes. This is not set in stone. I mean, we need to come back here for a, a final development plan. So if, if there are things that we can still change, we're, we're happy to do that and have those conversations. There, there's two things that are going to change the plan. Well, one thing is going to change the plan even further as we sit here today, and that's the, the mine vents. So Mississippi Lime has, I think, five mine vents on the property. Two of them need to stay. Three can be removed. So the two that need to stay, we're going to have to work around those. So, so the site plan is going to change a little bit to work around those. The, the other one could or could not change the layout and that's, we're, we're going to do some, some more soils testing very soon. There's some sinkholes on the property. So you can see in those green spaces, those are definite sinkholes. There, there's a, another area of concern that we want to explore. So getting those results back could change the layout further. So I, I guess my point is this isn't final. This isn't set in stone. I, I would recommend, let us punch out those two other due diligence items, the mine vents and, and the soils testing. And then I think we'd be happy to, and, and maybe it's a, a committee of the council that we could commit to come meeting with and say, okay, here, here's where we're at now. If you still would like to see some changes and if those cul-de-sacs are really important, we could, we could talk about that and discuss it. I will say putting those, trading these two smaller cul-de-sacs coming off Parkwood and then I don't know if that's Street A or what.
Street C.
Street C. Trading those back to the dead end cul-de-sac will drive the infrastructure costs back up. And, and that goes into the cost of the home. So there's a, there's a trade off there and a balance. But we want, we want a layout that the city is, is happy with. So we're, we're open to those conversations.
Yeah. And the affordability, you know, and stuff is very important. I was just thinking in the respect of having, I noticed the, the lot names changed and we lost what I thought was some of the bigger home lots and stuff to some of the smaller lots and stuff. Just trying to, you know, have something there that our market, you know, might be more interested in or more, would help you all sell.
We, I mean, this was, this plan was the result of us kind of taking the next step, diving in the plan, looking at costs and coming up with a plan that we think will be most successful. So we believe strongly in this plan, but with that said, we are, we, we want this to be a win for everybody. And we're happy to, to have more conversations.
You know, the culvert box thing made sense, you know, having to spend how many hundred thousand dollars there and stuff. That wouldn't, but that was, I was just thinking the dead end, I always thought was a more likeable area for people with more bigger homes and stuff.
But I know it's not the same, but we, we did try to, when, when we discussed with our engineer going to this, we said, hey, well, what about these two? Can we add in these two other cul-de-sacs? I know it's not the same as a dead end cul-de-sac, but it, it still gives that kind of more of that pie shaped lot where you get the bigger backyard. You get a little privacy on the street there because you won't have traffic pulling into those bubbles. Not the same, but, but we, we thought that was a good trade off.
Right.
Ultimately, you, you guys are, are wanting to sell the homes. So, you know, we know you're the experts at, at selling homes. So I guess with the, the, the increased amount of lots, planning and zoning approved, that it still fits inside of the parameters for the PUD R2. As far as the lot sizes and the amount of sizes, you were, I guess, able to find some more ground to, to fit those in that was usable.
It's just a, it's a more efficient design. Yep.
I was disappointed to see him gone. I thought that would have, like Alderman Dunn said, that it would have made him more tractable for some of those more like Oakwood series homes. At caution you on that Oakwood, there's a street just a quarter mile away that's named Oakwood. So, uh, so there's another Oakwood, just, it's a cul-de-sac. So just be cautious of that name. I know the series of your house is called, but maybe not name the street.
Yeah, we wouldn't name the street.
But yeah, seeing the loss of the cul-de-sacs was shocking. And I almost thought they were sealed engineered plans and that, that, that was, design was going to stay, but I guess not.
Yeah, that was, again, we just took that city plan and, and ran with it. And like I said, this was a result of us just taking a harder look, but not set in stone. I mean, we're not, you know, breaking ground tomorrow. So happy to continue those conversations and, and, you know, if there's more changes that need to be made, we, we can talk like that.
Alderman Ross, did you have another question?
Yes. And what we're voting on tonight, is this specifically to make Ryan? It, it wouldn't apply to any other bill or anything like that. We're only voting on this to rezone or make profit.
We're voting on just to reboat this property? You're rezoning this property to planned urban development.
Okay.
Designation.
But it's a agreement just between us and McBride?
This, this.
Going to be a agreement to?
This rezones the land.
Who?
This rezones the land.
That's all?
Rezoned, no.
Not to a specific company.
This rezones the land.
Just the land. Okay.
So it's not to a specific company. So if something falls through and we found another developer or something, this PUD R2 would also apply to anybody in the future.
Well, the other thing is the, the changes, you show, you showed your newest site plan there that I haven't even seen it yet. So it's totally new, but you're promoting it. And really the only thing I can see is you're going to benefit. What does our benefit? Is the housing on, are all the houses going to drop in price?
So that, that's going to fall outside of what we're discussing right tonight.
But I would say the city benefits from it. I mean, we've got 20 new houses.
Twenty new.
Additional homes, families.
They're, they're not bigger homes. They're taking bigger homes and making them with smaller lots.
Got 20 new people living in the city that's paying property taxes, paying sales taxes. Do you want 20 additional families living in town?
Can I ask you a question? The, the, what's your, what's your timeline? Normally the planned urban development, it's, a lot of times it's more precise, but because it's a subdivision development and people have to pick their own elevations and the lots are sold individually as it goes. What, what's your, what's your next step in this process? If this gets approved tonight, what's the timeline for, for a final plat approval, I assume is the, is the next step you're talking about?
So I think very quickly, we, we've got to finalize what the layout looks like. And, and we're scheduled to do some soils tests next week. We've had a lot of conversations with Mississippi Lime and continuing those on, on the mine vents. So in my mind, in the next two weeks, we got to have a final plan. As soon as we have that, we'll have our engineer start on detailed construction plans. You know, the stormwater design, the sewers, water main, laying out all that. That, that'll take a couple of months and that'll have to get approved by the city. And, you know, through that process or maybe simultaneously, we'll start working on that final plat. And really once those final design plans are approved, I think we're ready to close on the ground and get to work.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have one question for McBride. In the original plan, you had Bayside three car, 21 lots. How many lots do you have now for City Drive?
And the Bayside series 10?
Yeah.
So you cut that down again. One question for the, how many do you all have?
Like a McBride development?
Yes. I've got seven of them. I suggest all of you go. They're very nice built houses. Thank you.
I had one other question on the 13 acres, I think you mentioned was a common ground. Does that include the detention basins?
Yes.
So, and you said that that would be maintained by the homeowners association?
Correct.
Does that fall within our?
With most subdivisions now, you leave it for the, for the homeowners association to maintain the, the detention basins. Doesn't fall into the city. We would take care of the streets and the stormwater in the streets, but that would be it.
Just to follow up on your question, the trail, the pedestrian trail and the playground, which will be part of the common ground. I believe per the development agreement, those would be dedicated to the city. So those would be maintained if dedicated to, those would be maintained by the city.
And your layout, whichever final layout you come up with, those particular where you have color coded to the, in other words, you can't pick a yellow house and put it in a blue lot then, right?
Correct.
Right. It'll be strictly, right.
You have to, have to do this. Well, asking doing a public. It's part of public.
Any other questions from the board at this time regarding the rezoning requests? And then any other public input or questions?
I have one question. Do you know if there will be gas in some of these?
That, that's our intent, but we're not 100% confirmed on that.
If the homeowners association takes care of some of those common grounds, but yet the playgrounds and all of those are, will be maintained by the city, if I understood correctly. Approximately, what is the homeowners association going to be doing? Because that adds to their monthly payment because that has to be escrowed in. Is that a common thing with your subdivisions to, to do a homeowners association versus working with the city and relaunching that to the city so that doesn't add cost to the home or, or the mixed bag of, of some of your subdivisions? And if so, what kind of homeowners association, what, what happens if they don't pay the fees? I mean, can you kind of touch on that? I mean, I, I know from my, my background, but it might.
Right. So just to clarify, so the trail and the playground would be dedicated to the city. They would be maintaining it. That would not see any cost to the homeowners. So the homeowners association would maintain, you know, the grass lawn here, insurance, you know, lighting.
Entry monumental, electric for the entry monumental.
And so that's funded, so we would set it up. We are kind of a level machine. We know what works. So we have an extensive document that, you know, has all the restrictions. And there's an assessment that each owner would pay, you know, yearly, the annual assessment. So it wouldn't necessarily escrow. It's just, you know, they get an invoice for the yearly assessment. And then if they didn't pay that, you know, then, then the indentures have provisions for what happens. So typically, you need a lien on, on the home sort of like the end result.
One thing you mentioned about getting the homeowners.
All right. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm going to have to interrupt. So this is a public hearing and so people can address the board as far as what they want to bring forward in the hearing as opposed to questioning of other people who are presenting information at the public hearing. So it's a little bit more formal than, than like a town hall type of question answered thing. So unless there's questions from the board of these particular presenters, then I would think the next appropriate thing to be is if anybody else wants to speak on this rezoning request, this would be their opportunity to do it before the, the, the public hearing would close. And then of course, answers could be asked of them after the meeting if they want to stay around or of, of the administration if there are questions that want to be answered. But I, I, we just need to tighten up the, the public hearing part. And, and we need to have people up in the microphone to present input to the board before the decision is made.
Do you and the board have any other questions for?
Thank you.
Thank you. And then Scott, did you want to ask any formal question of the board of Alderman?
It's really an opportunity to be heard at the public hearing. So if anybody else wants to say anything either for or against this proposed zoning approval, now, now would be your time to do it as a member of the public.
Sorry. All right.
So do you mean if someone has concerns about the city's existing water and sewer system being able to handle an additional 20 homes? Now's the time to ask that question?
Now's the time to make any public comment as part of the public hearing. So I'm not sure who this person is, but if you want to identify yourself, now would be the time to speak.
Absolutely. My name is Tracy Upson. I live on Point Base Drive. And I've had repeated issues with the city's sewer system backing up into my basement over the past 20 years. And it's not getting any better. And I'm concerned that additional. And I'm concerned that additional residences on the same system without a plan for expanding the system that already can't handle what it's got in place is going to make everything worse for everybody in that neighborhood.
Thank you, Tracy. All right, if there's no other public comment at this time, then we will close the public hearing at 7:10. Thank you very much for all the input. Thank you to McBride, um, for your input as well. And then we do have a second public hearing tonight. Uh, the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Genevieve will hold a public hearing to consider an annexation petition filed with the city on May 20th, 2025 by the St. Genevieve Housing Authority. Go ahead, Dave.
St. Genevieve Housing Authority have petitioned the city to voluntary annex the parcel of land at the intersection of Missouri State Highway 32 and Terrace Drive. This parcel is contiguous and compact with existing corporate limits of the city, has water and sewer service available and is reasonable and necessary to the proper future development of the city. Per Municipal Code 405 dot 030C, all territory annexed into the city shall be classified as R1 single-family residential until and unless the Board of Aldermen by ordinance or in its own motion or upon application amend the zoning designation after referral to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning meant on July 17th and recommended that the R1 zoning be adopted upon annexation.
So what parcel is this exactly?
It's in your packet right here.
It's attached to.
All right.
Used to go to trailer, used to.
Small triangle at the corner of 32 and Terrace Drive. Any other questions?
Any questions for David from the board at this time?
Nope.
Thank you. And then any input from the public on this specific annexation request? Okay. If there is no further input, we will close that public hearing at 7:12. And we do not have any old business to discuss tonight, so we'll move ahead to some new business. We'll have a first reading and a second reading, potentially a bill number 4680. Uh, this is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri amending Schedule 2 Table 2A Stop Signs for the Intersection of Maple and Virginia.
I have a little bit of a discussion on that.
Yeah.
Um, I guess what was the need for the one on Virginia Street going onto Maple?
Well, traffic's going to be trying to go through to the coming out and into it. So if you don't have them stopped there, it's going to create a little bit of a.
So the discussion was, and we talked with the, uh, the police chief and with the, um, school superintendent, how to control that traffic best, and you're going to have traffic coming east on Maple that isn't going to stop with no left turn sign put up. We didn't want there to be an issue with somebody coming down Virginia and somebody coming down Maple at the same time. So you need to regulate Virginia Street, and then we also regulate Maple going west.
I, I agree with one on Maple a hundred percent and the left turn. I'm just not quite seeing, you know, adding a stop sign there and slowing traffic down. I would have thought the main concern would be to get the people out of there as quick as we could.
Well, but again, you're going to have confusion probably with the, the Virginia Street folks and the Maple Street folks. Cause if they both don't have stop signs, then you have an intersection like this. It's not like intersections going through. These are at an intersection coming in opposite directions. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say opposite directions, uh, directions where you're going to have a 90 degree angle. Uh, so it's best to stop that traffic on Virginia.
All right.
Well, I would rather put one in and be safe to see how it goes. And then we can always remove it if we don't need it. But if we don't put it in to begin with, then there's accidents because we didn't do it right the first time.
It's easier to put one in than it is to take it out, I would think, but.
How many accidents have to happen before we put a, or put one in? I'd rather put one in and see if it's.
The way that they're going to operate the drop off and pickup with there, it was clear that you could get a, you, you could reach a bottleneck at that entrance if the traffic coming out was not continuously moving out of there.
Yeah, I just don't think there's a traffic issue coming out. I mean, everybody's come to the fact that there's a lot of traffic up there. There's going to be more traffic with the early childhood, uh, but anyhow, after living up there for seven years, I think I have a viable opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you're at the childhood center and you're looking down Maple, you're not going to be able to make a left right there on Virginia?
Correct.
Correct. What about people that need to pick up another older kid? What are they going to be able to do?
So the idea in discussions with Dr. Taylor was, I mean, that they'll just have to traverse down Maple a little bit and then turn around and get in line. Yeah, I mean, they could cut in side street or turn.
Yeah, I think that's going to be the big issue.
Yeah.
You know, is all of that traffic, because I mentioned to Dave and Happy about possibly a third lane there on Maple Street so that the people going into the early childhood center wouldn't be mired up in all the traffic of the people picking up at the elementary school and stuff. Because right now, they get all the way to 9th Street just with those without adding, you know, uh, any area there. I mean, the school owns that lot, if the road has to be widened to do something like that, I just thought that was a viable solution. But, um, just trying to keep those people out of that line going down, turning around, you know, on Roadther or, um, St., you know, those two little streets there and creating more of a bottleneck, but.
Chief, do you have any input on that intersection, maybe just from your, from when, when you were asked to.
Stop signs are a must, they need to be there. There's just too much traffic. You know, Virginia has no stop sign at all. And when cars going through there, there's going to be wrecks and we work wrecks all the time, so we know what kind of needs to be prevented. The same thing with the Maple.
You said there's wrecks there all the time.
What?
You said there's wrecks there all the time.
No, there will be wrecks.
Okay.
We work wrecks all the time, so we kind of.
Right.
Where, you know, that's going to be an issue if you don't have stop signs.
We, we did, I mean, in discussions with Dr. Taylor, we did advise him that to keep us kind of abreast with what's going on there. And if there are, if there's an issue that we're not thinking of at this time.
Right.
About that intersection that comes up as school starts back up, then we're going to keep an open dialogue on it.
We're, we're going to be monitoring it for the first two weeks.
Right.
Uh, the PD and the school resource officers to see if it's working right, if we need to make a change. Cause that's going to be the busiest time, the first two weeks, because everybody's going to be all over the place. So we already have a kind of a plan going with.
So I'm not saying it's, it's a perfect plan right now, but there needs to be a plan. And if it needs to be tweaked heading into next school year or something along those lines, then we can address it.
I'm telling you, people that are come out of the early childhood center need to stop there, there's no question. You know, but getting some of those people that may be picking up involved, and I don't know how many that is, it might be a handful.
And we don't know that right now either.
Right.
So that's, that's one of those variables that we're, we're trying to account for that we really just don't know.
Yeah, my thought process was just get the people out there as quick as possible, less stop signs, but.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm like you, I, I don't want to see any more stop signs than need be. But I, I think there's got to be one there for the safety of the intersection. And I, I mean, we, the idea behind the no left turn was try to keep the traffic moving into the early childhood as well so that they didn't have to worry about somebody trying to make that left.
Yeah, that.
Or cutting in line, which could happen as well at that intersection.
Yeah, I.
I'm just, you gave me the look, but I'm just saying, uh, we don't, we want to prevent a road rage incident.
Yeah, and I did talk, you know, to Dr. Taylor about, you know, and they have went and looked about being able to stage all of their people picking up on their property there and stuff, which will help.
Yeah.
So.
We just wanted to keep that traffic moving out of there and get them down 9th as opposed to going up and around Virginia or going somewhere where they're going to interfere with either the drop off or the pickup that's going on at the elementary, middle school, et cetera. So trying to get them back out 9th Street, we felt like maybe our best option. And if we give the parents enough time to adjust to the plan, then that'll be the plan.
They'll figure out what works.
And we, we probably expect to get some feedback from this, and, and that's okay. Like I said, it, it may not be a perfect plan, but it's, we're just, we're trying to figure out some things right now that we've, this is brand new. So he's going to keep us posted with how he feels like it's working. And I'm, I'm sure Chief will, you know, like he said, they're going to be monitoring to make sure that that's working the way it's intended, so.
And likewise, I will too.
Okay, fair enough, good.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed?
Yes.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for a second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed? Yes.
Two.
Opposed?
Okay.
Jill posted.
Okay. Believe we have enough for a second reading, so this will be a second reading of bill number 4680. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri amending Schedule 2 Table 2A Stop Signs for the Intersection of Maple and Virginia.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Hold on, will they be up tomorrow?
Yes, they will.
Yes, yeah, by Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, I believe I have a motion and a second. Uh, Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Dobbs?
Yes.
Alderman Fahy?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
No.
Alderman Huey?
Yes.
Alderman Einman? Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no. Bill number 4680 now becomes ordinance 4601.
Thanks very much. Uh, next up tonight, we have a first reading of bill number 4681. This is an ordinance approving a zone change from an R1 single-family residential to a PUD R2 Planned Urban Development general residential for a 49.04 acre parcel located along the northern side of the 500 to 600 block of Progress Parkway.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And then last up tonight, we have a first reading of bill number 4682. This is an ordinance providing for the annexation of certain real estate owned by St. Genevieve Housing Authority authority into the City of St. Genevieve existing corporate limits.
Approve this?
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any other business from the board to discuss at this time?
Uh, I did forget to bring up during my report that we have paid our portion of the MODOC ferry of the 15,000 that was appropriated. The final cost ended up being 9,475.61. Uh, we have all of the bills and statements, uh, on, on, in our files, uh, from where that came from. So that was it.
Wow.
Yeah, that's great.
So what did we pay?
The ferry.
No, I mean, no detail.
I just, it's, if you want to see the details, we've got it on file.
Okay.
But it's on pay, the pay schedules, uh, uh, whatever items added by maintenance, that kind of stuff.
Um, with, uh, recent, uh, announcements of RCA's resignation, are we going to talk about advertising, um, replacements? How are we going to?
Come on to work session.
Work session personnel.
Just for advertising for a new, new position?
It's on the agenda, I mean.
Oh, it's, but it's marked as a closed session.
Yes, correct.
See how good.
Any other topics to discuss? Okay, if not, we will adjourn and move into work session. Thank you all. Put up tonight's work session, um, we'll call the meeting to order. At this time, we're looking for approval of tonight's work session agenda.
Motion to approve? Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First item tonight, uh, we're going to have another discussion on the, um, the sewer backup from April uh, and the insurance appeal, uh, point base for Mr. James and Ms. Etherington.
So the board asked that we bring it back after they had appealed, um, again to the insurance company. Insurance company turned them down. Um, Ms. Etherdon sent the request in and so did Steve Goldenberg. Um, uh, Mr. James did not. Uh, but he wanted me to make sure I brought it back to the board because you had requested that. And Ms. Etherton is on, uh, uh, is joining us via Zoom, uh, for that. Um, again, you have my recommendation as to what the board should do, uh, but that's for you to decide tonight.
Happy, so some of the things we talked about, uh, analyzing the real problem out there and stuff is just starting, correct?
Correct.
So we're pretty early in this.
Oh, we haven't done any yet.
We did the dye testing.
Oh, we did?
Yeah. We're going to have to get into it a little bit more. We have to notify the residents before we start doing smoke testing so they don't worry about, that something is catching on fire.
Do we have, uh, a report for the dye testing?
Uh, not yet.
Verbally?
Well, we've been, because we've been jumping around to these other projects, we don't have anything written up yet. And trying to get all of it done, completed.
Yeah, with all these paving and.
Um, with the new discovery at, at the senior center with, with, uh, that stormwater and potentially sewer, um, it, it really makes me more cautious and, and more, uh, concerned that this is a bigger issue and that it's not just a homeowner issue, that this is, the city has an issue out there, uh, with sewer water getting into the stormwater. All right, I'm sorry, stormwater getting into the sewer, uh, system.
But I, I don't think it's negligence on our part. I think it may be a situation, but it's not negligence.
Perhaps they're going to advocate pulling all the stops out, finding what the problem is and fixing the problem. I know, you know, people will, you know, these insurance companies are, um, they take your money, but they sure don't want to pay it out when you have a, a situation and stuff. But I, I still think we need to find the problem and fix it. And we need to do everything to assure the homeowners that we are doing that and we are fixing it, but.
I'd like to table this until we get the results back from the, the dye and the smoke tests and the repairs on the senior center out there to kind of really truly see what is going on there. And I, I think we could, uh, wait a couple more weeks, um, and address this after we see if, what, what the system really looks like.
I hope, I hope Tracy, you would give us a couple more weeks till we get the, the tests done. And I know you don't like this to be drug on any longer, but, uh, I think we'd make the rest of the board, uh, see kind of what the issue really is.
Yeah, I agree with Joe on that. We should postpone this until we find out more of what's going on out there. But the thing is, uh, what is our plan? Uh, running the smoke test. Haven't we done those before?
Yes.
So we're just repeating the same thing we've done before.
We're seeing if we find anything, do anything that's, uh, hadn't been found before.
We're trying to find out what the original problem was. It's still there. So, uh, I'd like to know what else we, what are we doing? We're just going, let's just wait to see what they do with the, with the, the road out there by the, the center and see if that's the problem or, and wait for the smoke test to come back. It probably tells the same thing. So what do we go from there, where do we go from there?
Uh, from there, we have to decide if we're going to bring an engineer in to do some other deeper look at, look into it. Uh, if there's some areas that we're not thinking about that we need to test. Uh, we're doing what we can do readily ourselves. Yeah.
Well, we, we need to step it up. We need to actually start doing it. I mean, these people have been suffering for how many years over this? And all we do is just.
At least 20.
Yeah, I've had problems since 2005. There's been seven documented cases of that. And I can appreciate that you guys might not think you have a negligent situation, but I've got some documentation that might give somebody a little bit more to think about in that arena. I completely empathize with wanting to know what the bigger problem is and what's going on, but you've been telling me to come back since April 24. And we haven't even finished the testing on it because we've been busy with other projects, is what I'm hearing.
I guess I'm going to ask a question here. So say we, we decide to pay you money. Two weeks from now, we have a rain and a half again, so you expect us to pay you again? We still don't know what the problem is. That's, I am sure that question's on everybody's mind here. You know, and how do we, you know, how do we ever get this thing to the end?
I, I understand. How do I ever get to the end of my basement backing up with other people's sewage in it? Would you want to experience that? It's happened twice in the last year.
I have experienced it in the house I own and stuff. I know your pain, trust me, but I, I just think finding out the problem and fixing it, whatever we have to do, is, is the only logical way to make sure to you guys it'll never happen again and to the other.
I'd love you to find the problem and fix that, but it feels like asking me to, to wait longer and asking me to wait longer is, is a really effective strategy for me to not come back and bother you about it again, and then we don't worry about it. The first meeting I went to in April about this, I'm not sure exactly what the issue was, but I heard somebody on the board say, well, we can just wait 20 years from now. It can be somebody else's problem to worry about. I don't know what exactly that was, but it kind of established the mindset of the, of the room. And I'm not feeling a lot of confidence that there's really going to be a solution to this problem. And the best I can hope for is maybe somebody will, will pay to have the basement cleaned. That, that's a pretty dismal future to consider, quite frankly.
Tracy, I don't know who said that, but.
It wasn't my mindset either, I can tell you.
Yeah. We, well, I want to get to the bottom of this, so. But we also want to make sure we, we get it fixed and, and done right. So I think you've seen that we've put the effort in this time and that we're going to keep going. I'm trying to fight, and, you know, we haven't put in the flapper valve to kind of prevent it from going forward because we don't want to have to make you do that, or I guess it'd be up to your option if you ever wanted to do that. But please just bear with us and let's see what the smoke test and the dye test comes back with and what we can figure out. And because otherwise, it, it must be a bigger problem. It won't, it won't be forgotten.
Can, can we at least get you guys to set a deadline for this issue so that we're not looking at this again in another six months going, yeah, well, we just didn't get to that test yet?
There is no deadline. If she wants to file a claim against the city, she's, she has every opportunity to do so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so Joe, Alderman Steiger, are you motioning to table it?
I don't, should we do that at a work session? I guess it's a budget and business item. Yes, I'm making a motion that we table this for one month for the second September meeting.
Okay. So the motion is to table work session agenda item one until the second meeting in September to hopefully have some answers from testing currently ongoing.
I've got a question.
Is there a second? You got a question?
Yes, about the appeal process.
Yes.
I mean, what was that appeal process? Did we just go back to our insurance company and ask them?
We had them go back to the insurance company, submit whatever they wanted to submit for their information. In fact, Tracy had to contact them a couple of times because the first person didn't get back to her with response very quickly.
So Mark, do we have any legal recourse back to the insurance company where we can threaten them with a lawsuit to honor these claims, or I mean, is there?
Well, I'll just give you the conclusion, and then I can give legal advice. Not in open session. The conclusion is no.
Mayor, I've got a motion and a second.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. So reminder of the motion is to table this until the second meeting in, excuse me, September. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Tracy.
We're fighting still for it, Tracy.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I want it fixed.
Okay. Work session agenda item number two. Favorite time of year. Here it comes.
There we go.
Budget handout.
Pick one. Negligence.
Listen up, you're saying.
Oh, gosh.
So I'm, I'm not going to go through all of this tonight. We do it next Thursday.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm not going to go through all this tonight. I'm just handing it to you so you can look at it. If you have any particular questions, call me, stop by, text me. You have the overall budget picture. You have the individual line items, and then some other paperwork that might help with understanding where we're going. Also, the capital items that are put in there, and I've made recommendations on those capital items. So that'll be mostly what we'll discuss next Thursday is capital. But we can look at the other items that we have. The numbers came back okay. They're not great. Our, at this point, we have, for salaries and operational, we're in good shape. We're under what our revenue is, so our expenditures are less. But once you get into capital, then it ends up being more. A little different when you get to the bottom row, but you're looking at a $13 million budget to about $9 million because of all of the Prop S money that we have. So there are inflated numbers in there, but that's because of what we have in the way of some grants. Police Department is working on grants. Other departments are working on that, and we have the Prop S money that inflates it. So we will discuss this further next Thursday. Let's walk.
Questions right now before we? Are we good? Got your marching orders? Okay.
A little more.
Okay, and then work session agenda item number three. We have some discussions on real estate and personnel.
So actually, the real estate part is gone.
Okay.
Yeah, that has been eliminated, but we do have litigation and personnel we won't talk about.
Okay. And there is.
I have a motion to go into closed session for litigation and personnel.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to move into closed session. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Dobbs.
Yes.
Alderman Fahy.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Huey.
Yes.
Alderman Aiman.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yep.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Motion carries 7:40.
Thank you all for the good spirited discussion. And remember, budget meeting next Thursday. Great.
6:00 p.m.
Same time, same place.
Will you be doing a tech thing or a thing?
When's the big party?
I think it's all optional if you look at it, so. We are adjourned.